Our town council meeting for March 9th. And we welcome everyone here and also by live stream. And so, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Tom Lombardi.
Here.
James Morelli.
Here.
Christopher Palmeri.
Here.
Christopher Pulis.
Here.
Paul Chaplinsky.
Here.
Michael Dos Santo.
Present.
Valerie DePaolo. William Dietzick. Victoria Triano.
Here. Could we all stand for the prayer and the flag salute, please?
Our Father, help us this night to do the right thing in all the issues that we consider. Help us to not be persuaded by popular opinion or political ambition, but rather to see this office we hold as a gift from you. Help us walk upright in this calling. Amen.
Amen. Would you join me in the flag salute, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Chris. Item number two, our minutes.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from February 24th, 2020.
Do I have a second?
Second, Madam Chair.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing none, we'll move on. Councilmatic communications. Anyone like to share anything? Yes, go ahead, Tom.
Thank you, Chairwoman Triano. Just a reminder for the residents and the council members that the United Way of Southington is hosting their annual dinner on Friday, March 20th at 7:00 PM. I will be attending and I think Chairwoman Triano will be as well. So, just want to get the word out there on the United Way Dinner, Friday, March 20th.
Very good. Thank you. Anyone else? Yes.
Madam Chair, I have a couple of brief things. First and foremost, I had a slight emergency at my home a couple of weeks ago. Something was burning. Really strong smell of wire burning in my house. And I was freaking out and I was running around touching all the plugs to see what it was. It happened to be my doorbell. The wires in the doorbell burnt out. But I just want to commend the Southington Fire Department. Because I had to call the fire department. I was freaking out and they came. And they were wonderful. They set our minds at ease. I have two adolescent children, but children. They weren't very nervous, but the fire department was wonderful. They came en masse, you know, to take care of it, which was a little scary, but they did a really great job and set our minds at ease and completely professional. We're very, very fortunate to have the fire department that we have.
When you go through something like that.
Good stuff, yeah. Luckily, it was just the doorbell.
Yeah.
You know, that fried out. But we're very fortunate to have the fire department in Southington. And then, secondly, my dad is a Vietnam veteran. And we have John DeMello downtown at the town hall, who is the Veterans Coordinator. And I've been speaking to John. I've known John for years and years and years. And he knows that my dad's a Vietnam veteran. And he's constantly asking me, "Get your dad in here. There's probably some benefits that, you know, he qualifies for, he doesn't even know about." So, we finally met with him. My mom and my dad and I went and saw him last Thursday. What an operation. John's doing a great job. So, if there are veterans in Southington that have questions and that are in need, please stop down there. He's open the same hours, pretty much the same hours as the town hall is open. I know on that... Yeah, it's on the website. I know on Thursday evening, he was there till 7:00. And when we got there at 4:30, there was someone already in there working with him. And there were two people there when we left. So, he's very, very busy and he does a wonderful job coordinating for veterans of Southington, which...
We're very fortunate because our whole Veteran Committee volunteers their time to maintain that office. Mark and I had had a meeting with them and they are really dedicated to helping our veterans in this community and even within the state.
Wonderful.
So, yeah, it's wonderful to hear. Thank you. Anyone else have any... Yes, Chris?
Just a quick thing. I had the pleasure of attending the Southington High School Drama Club performance, "All Shook Up," this past weekend. So, just a huge shout out to all the students and the staff that were responsible for that production.
Somebody had posted some videos on Facebook and it looked like it was great fun.
It was great fun.
That's terrific. Anyone else? Yes, Chris?
On the same, on the arts, I was able to attend the Southern Connecticut Regional Music Festival this weekend down in North Branford, where students from both DePaolo and Kennedy Middle School performed. These are students that auditioned and then qualified and then went down to perform with other middle school students throughout the southern region of the state. And John F. Kennedy School had the biggest representation of any middle school there. And so, it was a tremendous, I mean, tremendous concert. If you closed your eyes and you didn't know who was on stage, you'd think you were down in New York City. It was very impressive.
That's very good. Anybody else? Yes, Councilman Chaplinsky.
Chaplinsky, yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. I had three items. The first item is, I'm going to pass along to everybody sitting at the dais. This is the summary report from the last year from the Pleasant View Stables property and the Open Space Committee update that I'll give a little bit later. We'll have some information on that. So, I wanted to just get that out so that you can take a quick look. I also wanted to update that I had a wonderful opportunity to ride with, through request with the Southington Police Department, to do a ride along. And I was assigned to Sergeant Salerno and rode along on Friday afternoon with Sergeant Salerno and also with K-9 Officer Lou, which was an excellent experience. You know, I can't say enough about, you know, the work that our officers do, including the K-9 officers. It was a really great experience. And I was extremely impressed with the facility. You know, I had never been behind the glass walls, I'm proud to say. But I learned a lot about the operations and the manpower and how we're using that. You know, I rode around for almost five hours and doing various calls and various stops. And I think that that was, it was really eye-opening for me. And I wanted to say thank you to Sergeant Salerno, Deputy Chief Palmeri, and Chief Daley and the rest of the wonderful folks at the Southington Police Department for all the work that they did to set this up and allow me to ride along.
Did you make any bus?
No bus.
Take anyone down?
Yeah. So, and then the last item, Madam Chair, is for the Town Manager. There was, this had come up, this had come up in the past. It was a presentation a year ago and there's been some subsequent follow-ups. I'd like to ask, at the next meeting, if we can get a report out on the Blatchley, I'm sorry, the resident who lives across from Blatchley, who was having the water problem? Just give a brief report out on, you know, some of the dialogue that we've had, how things are going, you know, what are the options for the future? And I'd like to just, you know, put that on the table so that we can close the loop and hopefully get things squared away there.
Anybody else? I just want to add, I think all of us are anticipating the opening of Tops. It's on Facebook. It's everybody's, really, there's really a great buzz about it all. And I know the youth group over at Mary R. Queen was cleaning the racks and the, in the different aisles getting ready. And they're starting to stock shelves. And so, we want to just congratulate Betsy and John Salerno on their decision to reopen and moving right ahead. And I'm sure it's going to be quite successful. And we're very happy to see that landmark come back into Southington. So, I just wanted to say a little congratulations. Thank you, everybody. We're all set. And let's go to special committees reports. I'm going to open it up with the Open Space Committee, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. A few brief items. Councilman Palmeri, please add as you see fit. So, we've had a few items that are of interest. Number one, the Pleasant View Stables, which I've just passed out. We dialogued, I think, about that at the last meeting or maybe the meeting before.
The past couple.
Yeah, because I don't recall. I don't think it was at the last meeting. But our goal here is, there was a study done by Mylona McBrum and Councilman Palmeri was involved in that along with others. John Myers, Ed Pocock III, and Brian Gerasky, who were involved in putting together these master plans for both Pleasant View and Gerasky. And what we'd like to do is, we'd like to, you know, we as the Open Space Committee reviewed both of these and we feel that Pleasant View is ready to go and ready for adoption. So, what we would like to do is put this on the agenda. You know, this is for everybody's reading pleasures between now and the next meeting. And the goal would be, if everybody's comfortable with it at the next meeting, to formally adopt the plan. And what does that mean? It means that the Open Space Committee has agreed that we think that the plan is good. We've given it the thumbs up and asked that council adopt it. And adopting it basically means that if we do work in the future on the property, this is a guideline. It's a recognized guideline that will last past this council and will continue with other councils to give a guideline on where, if we want to spend money, we want to, you know, do things to the property. This will help shape that and be on the record, if you will, for the future.
So, just to add to that, the other person that served on the committee with us was, because of the transition to retirement, Mark Poehler. So, John Myers was with us and then he retired, so Mark Poehler came on. So, I'd just like to give a shout out to Mark Poehler as well. And as Paul said, there's no, although there are expenses noted in the report, there are suggestions and placeholders, just so we had some concept. However, we're not asking to allocate any funds. In fact, like on the Gerasky property, we're all aware, the farm stand was completely donated. High school students helped contribute that and it was donated. But again, it's in this plan for that property, but we have visions for Pleasant Street the same way and hopefully we can get donations.
And, you know, we do have, to add on to that, there is another structure that's planned for the Pleasant View that's just about ready, you know, coming in the spring, which is also part of a donation. And, you know, I think it's important that as we start to do things on that property, that we do it with a plan in place. And this structure is consistent with the plan. So, I think that, you know, rather than just doing things, you know, one-off here and there, it would be good for us to all agree on what that piece should look like and how it's going to help us with, you know, with the open space. It's going to help us with the LEAF program. It's going to help us with education and so on and so forth.
I'm very excited about it. I think it's going to be, we look forward to the presentation and the action. Thank you so much.
Just one other thing to add. Not only was the, it's a shed. Not only was the structure, the materials donated, but the high school construction, students built it. So, it's at the high school now. I just spoke to Mark. We're pretty much ready to move it. But they built it, so the kids built it. And then it will be, they'll get to see it and see the fruits of their labor as they drive by.
Yeah, that's great. What an excellent...
Then in the future, drive by it and tell their kids and say, "I built that."
I built it. Yeah, that's great. It's great. Thank you so much.
Madam Chair, I have a clarification. On the agenda, are you, last time we did it, I think Mylona McBrum gave a report. Is that what you want again? I'll get in touch with them to see if they can give a report. Or Paul, are you going to give the summary at the next meeting then?
Sure. We can, we can give the...
This is our document then?
Sure. Yep. This is the exact report from Mylona McBrum. I eliminated the Gerasky.
Unless you want, I don't think I need to bring them in here again.
No, no. I think they presented once.
I'll have the Open Space Committee do the presentation.
Great. And Councilman Pulis, did you have a question?
No, I'm all set. Thank you.
A few more items. Our next meeting, for those who are interested, we're trying to schedule our next Open Space Meeting later this month. I think it's March 25th at the LEAF facility, where Mark Ramsey will give us an overview. We'll have a brief administrative meeting, as we normally do. Then we'll confer with Mark Ramsey, who will give us an overview of the LEAF program, a tour of the facility, kind of show, you know, a little bit about what's going on with the LEAF program, how it ties into Farm Heritage and so on.
And will it be an open session? That whole thing will be open?
It's going to be just like any meeting. It'll be open to the public.
But you're not going into executive session for that?
Nope. It'll be posted on the, it'll be posted on the website as well. On the agenda, of course, Open Space, we have a couple of agenda items later in the meeting. The school and Marion property in the 824, those will be discussed later. We continue to have various dialogue about other parcels in town, so we do have some activities, so that's really good. And then the last item is, you know, we are, we're looking at two things at Novix. We're looking to maybe light the parking area in Novix with some LED-type lighting. So, Dave LaValle is working on trying to determine what our options are for a pole with a light or maybe a pole with a camera. We've heard a number of times over the last handful of years that that open space parcel does get folks who are parking there. The police department does get calls there about activities that are going on. And so, we thought that that would be, that along with a sign might be a nice deterrent to some of the things that are being reported. And the last item on the same parcel and maybe for others in town, we have a couple opportunities to, we have a couple of parcels that are overgrown. One, two pieces of the Novix parcel is overgrown with some invasives. You know, we would like to clear some of those so that they can be actively managed versus overgrown with invasive species. And we have Bradley Mountain, who's helping us, and then another who is also considering bringing some goats to the property for us. So, Dave LaValle is working with them to find out, you know, what would it cost to bring some goats to these properties and clear these heavily, heavily brushed properties in a way that is not so invasive from a, you know, a machinery perspective. So, really excited to see how that works out.
Sounds like fun. Very good. Any questions for Councilman Chaplinsky? Thank you, Paul. Hearing none, let's move on to Public Works.
Madam Chair, on Wednesday, March 4th, we had our Public Works Subcommittee meeting and a couple of brief items. The police department, their Chief Daley reported the police department is working with the Hop House Restaurant in Plansville, who was once again hit by another automobile for the fourth time, I think, in the last two or three years, which is a little disheartening. But the Highway Department placed some plastic jersey barriers right up against the building. I did see those. They're hoping that may be able to, yeah, filled with water, to, you know, if it should happen again, God forbid, that would defray some of the cars driving into the building and take away some of the damage that has been done in the past. And they are actually working with the state as well to put a sign up at some point. I know a discussion came up with guardrails, but Keith Hayden made it very clear that guardrails probably wouldn't be the best thing to do.
The arrows are up.
Oh, the arrows are up. Okay, the signs are up for the arrows. I haven't driven by. But guardrails probably wouldn't work in a situation like that because guardrails are not made to be hit dead-on. They're made to be, you know, struck on a 90-degree angle on the side of the road. So, what they don't want is for someone to hit a guardrail and then get airborne and hit the building higher up in the air. So, there's going to be a continual discussion with regards to this, possibly planting some shrubs, some other sort of mechanism to assist. But at the end of the day, it's human error. Folks need to drive carefully. They need to not drink and drive. They need to be cautious, especially at night when it's dark and, you know, people are in danger. So, that's going to be an ongoing discussion. We are going to try to help out the property. But we can only do so much because it's private property that folks are traversing over to hit this building. So, the next item was the bulky waste transfer station. I had asked to put on the agenda. We had a discussion, a very spirited discussion with regards to some potential abuse of folks using the transportation to support their hauling businesses. So, we just want to be certain, we're not doing this to take money out of anyone's pockets, but we want to make sure that the stuff that's being dumped at the transfer station is property or things from Southington. We want to make sure that, you know, it's taxpayer-funded and we want to be certain that there isn't any funny business going on. So, staff is going to be on the lookout for folks that may be utilizing the transfer station and bringing stuff in that is from out of town. We, you know, this is, that was not the intention of the transfer station, so we want to make sure we keep a tight handle on that. So, that, once again, we will have continual discussions with regards to that as well. Lots of great ideas came through that one discussion item. The Water Department did have a brief announcement that they are going to be sending some notices out to residents that could have potentially elevated levels of manganese in their water. So, there's more to follow on that. I would imagine we'll learn more at our next meeting. It's not, it's nothing to be panicked about, but they would have to report that. Mr. Caserella said that they would have to send letters out to some of the homes that are affected and how to manage.
Well, I'd like to get an update from the Water Department.
Right. Right.
I'd like to know what's going on with that.
Mm-hmm.
You know, so perhaps at our next meeting.
Yep. Okay, we'll get Mr., maybe Mr. Caserella to come out.
We'll just, I'll ask him for some written documentation.
Sure.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
I don't know if Mr. Pulis or Mr. Chaplinsky have anything to add? If I missed anything?
Very complete report.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. And Madam Clerk, we are, anyone wishing to get a permit for bulky waste just goes down to your office, is that correct?
That's correct. If it's a renewal, they just need to walk in. We already have their information. It takes just a few seconds to do that.
Okay. And if it's a new request...
And a new vehicle, they have to bring their registration.
What do they need if it's a new request?
Their registration, the vehicle that they're going to use, and their driver's license.
Okay, very good. So, now we all know. Very good. Any other reports for special committees? Anybody want to report in something special? Okay. That's it. So, Mr. Town Manager, would you take on your report, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to take these out of order because I know A is going to be longer than B and for their time. I don't know if they want to sit there through both of these, but this is the extension of the Chamber of Commerce agreement. Those of you who've been on the council for many years know that five years ago, we put together a five-year agreement whereby the town and the chamber entered a partnership whereby the town would get permits from the state to allow signs on our ramps on our two highways. In this particular case, it's been very successful, obviously, there's some beautiful signs that are up. And it's also beneficial to the chamber. So, I'm going to ask Barbara to come up and just, or Matt, whoever's supposed to come up, and just give us a brief synopsis of how it's been over the last five years. Now, I can't believe it's been five years already, but we're here for a five-year extension.
I can't believe it's been 20 years. I just first would like to say thank you to everybody. It's been wonderful coming back to Southington. I've been working with all of you. I appreciate your efforts as volunteers as well and supporting the community. I love working with Mark again, everybody at the town, working with Lou Perillo. We have a wonderful partnership between the town and the Chamber of Commerce, and we are here to keep that going. So, I just want to say thank you for all of your efforts in supporting what we do as well. Matt O'Keefe is the immediate past chairman of our board and because he was instrumental in the initiative of this particular program, I'm going to let him do most of the talking.
Yeah, that was good. Yeah, hi, Matt.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Your Town Manager essentially stole part of what I was going to say because he and I wrote the contract five years ago. And it's basically a partnership between the town and the chamber, and we work with Sign Pro. And at no cost to the town, we have these beautiful signs that either say, "Welcome to Southington" or "Thank you for coming to Southington." It was a five-year contract and we're hopeful that the town will renew it for another five years on the same terms and conditions. And we thank you for the cooperation that you've given us. And, you know, we want to be good neighbors.
Yeah, very good. They're very attractive. Mark, do we have to petition the state again for continuation?
We actually do that. We do that every year.
Oh, okay.
So, Jim Grapon has been very good that way. And we have the permits renewed every year. And obviously, come, I believe it ends in April or May, we'd like to extend it for another five years. So, Jim will continue to do that.
Right.
And I just want to say that the Town Attorney has reviewed the document and corrected any mistakes that Matt and I made five years ago, so.
Does anybody have any questions?
Thank you to the Town Attorney for their brilliant work.
There weren't many. Great job.
Yes, Tom.
Thank you, Attorney O'Keefe and Barbara for coming. And I would ask the Town Manager to explain to the council and the public, because if I recall, prior to five years, there was always a level of uncertainty with the signs. Who was maintaining them? What was going on them? So, I think this agreement was like, okay, we solved the problem. It's a win-win for both organizations. And for the past five years, I think it's been, the signs have been maintained very well. They've always looked great from my experience. So, I would, I fully support another five years.
I'll sum up very simply, saying that it was a very informal process, both with the town, the state, and the chamber. The state had made it perfectly clear to me that they no longer wanted the informal process, and that's we worked with the formal process by getting our permits and having it assigned to the chamber. So, yes, prior to five years, it was informal.
Right.
And not necessarily proper. So, now we changed all that.
That's correct. And the signs are all uniform.
Yeah.
They make a nice statement when people get here.
And maintain very well, too, which makes it continue to be attractive. Yeah, very good. Anybody have any questions about the signage? Okay, hey, thank you.
That'll be, that'll be actually later on the agenda, Madam Chair.
I see, yeah. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Now, I think that everyone has probably either seen, read, or heard about this over the last several weeks. So, we've asked Shane Lockwood, our Director of our Health District, to come and brief us on the coronavirus.
Yes, before you start, Shane, I just want to just let folks know who are in the audience right now, that after Shane is finished, if someone has a question, raise your hand and we'll make sure that you get a chance to ask Shane. If he can answer it, he will. There are certain things that, at this point in time, he's not, he's not really able to answer because he's waiting for more information or whatever. And so, just please understand that. But I would like to get everybody on the record as they ask their questions, Shane, because people viewing this probably have the same questions.
Absolutely.
So, welcome to our meeting, Shane. Everyone is very anxious to hear your words. We've been listening to television and radio and some of the hyperbole, some of the panic that's going on. So, we're very anxious to hear the truth and what we can do and as a community where we stand. Thank you.
Thank you. Shane Lockwood, Director of Health, Plainville-Southington Health District. And I'm glad you mentioned what you can do, because I'm going to start my talk with the same message and end it with it. What we can do is pretty simple. It's everything we learned in kindergarten. It's wash your hands with soap and water, okay? It's stay away from others if you're sick. It's cover your cough and sneezes. It's a pretty simple message. We're taking care of a lot of this. There's no need to panic. There are things we could do to protect ourselves. I'm going to say that again at the end because I've been putting that in every press release and speech that I've been giving. So, the current situation with the coronavirus right now is, in Connecticut, we've had 56 tests, two have come back positive for this. So, again, we've tested 56 people, only two have come back positive. That being said, I certainly expect more cases in the coming days, weeks, and months. I mean, this is going to have a disruption to our lives, but we're well aware of it. We're on it. I'm going to detail our activities tonight. Worldwide, there's been about 110,000 cases. The positive to that is, out of those 110,000 cases, over 65,000 people have recovered from it. Approximately a little bit over 3,500, 3,600 deaths, and the rest are battling it right now. But again, of the 110,000 known cases, we're looking at over 65,000 have recovered and continued on with their lives. The big thing I want to stress here tonight, besides those personal precautions you could take, this is gonna be a marathon. This is not gonna be a sprint. As you mentioned for the TV newspapers, everything we see, and the newspapers have been great, because they're getting that personal precaution messages out there, but this is, we're in this for the long haul. Don't get burnt out on this in the first couple of weeks. Look at the messages, look at the situation, do what you can to protect yourselves, but understand that I'm planning on dealing with this for the months ahead. So we'll get there, but it's very much a marathon. It's not a sprint. So to give you an idea of what we've been doing as a health district, we've been issuing press releases constantly. We put another one out this morning. It's up on our website, which is pshd.org, Plainville-Southington Health District, so pshd.org. I also want to promote the State of Connecticut website. They have a lot of good information at ct.gov. And then the CDC website, which is where we're getting majority of our information from, cdc.gov. I implore you, go to the known websites for the reliable, up-to-date information. There's a lot of misinformation out there. Go to the ones that, we're updating all these websites constantly, and we have a lot of information out there. We've been in constant contact with our town leaders. I know the town manager probably gets a few emails a day from me, a few meetings a day from me. We've been contacting community leader, medical community. I just had a great meeting last week with the Hospital of Central Connecticut. Based on that meeting, or they had in the works, they created a hotline that I think we put in our press release. They've put in press releases 24 hours a day, seven days a week. If you have questions regarding this, you can call the Hospital of Central Connecticut, and they have physicians, nurses, medical community standing by to help answer your questions. So we've had some great conversations with the medical community. I met with our CERT team, our Community Emergency Response Team, last week. So we had a productive meeting. We've talked about ways I might be able to use them in the future, and we answered the questions that they had. So we're talking to all the people we need to. We created a press release for the business community. We've put that on our website about planning ahead, and I believe the town manager is working to try and get that out to the business community. We've also done a press release for town employees, just to give them an idea of what's going on and where they could go for more information. All of these press releases information we're putting out there really has the same message. Personal precaution measures you could take to protect you, your family, your loved ones, and where to go for the most accurate information, which again is gonna be pshd.org, ct.gov, While this is scary and new and in the news, I just want to note, this is not new for health district. So we've been working on pandemic flu planning and pandemic planning for, I've been in public health 28 years. I've probably been doing planning for 20 years of them regarding pandemics. I have, we have experience with real-life pandemics. We had the SARS pandemic in 2003. We had the H1N1 pandemic in 2009. We had a MERS coronavirus in 2014. We had the Ebola, which this is nothing like Ebola, but we still learned a lot from Ebola. And we have a seasonal flu every year. So based on all those real-life experiences, we've created plans, we've edited our plans based on lessons learned. We also participate in many drills and exercises. Usually, once a year, we participate in a pandemic flu exercise, and based on those, we update all of our plans at that point. So it's not only myself working on this, our chief sanitaryian and acting director of health in my absence, Amy Schultz, who, her background is, at one point, she was our emergency preparedness coordinator for a local health department. I also have Sue Jacozzi, who is our part-time health educator. She was also a former director of health for the Westport-Western Health District, and she currently works as our emergency preparedness coordinator for other health departments, and she's our health educator. So we have a lot of experience in this. Like I said, this is not new for us. It's just a matter of implementing the plans that we have had and that we continue to put in place. Our planning assumptions going forward, we're planning for the worst, hoping for the best. I mean, we do have plans for all of this. We're continuing watching the situation, and we're adjusting as we have to. Since mid-January, I've had conference calls every Monday with the Center for Disease Control, every Wednesday with the Connecticut Department of Public Health, and at 5:00 tonight, I was on one with the Governor's Office of Connecticut. We're getting information at a rapid pace. I probably get emails from CDC at least once a day with a morning update, and most likely two or three times that throughout the day. So we're getting the information. We're talking to our regional partners, our state partners, our local partners, and federal partners on this. So we're getting enough information, we're getting enough cooperation. We have health district, we have the supplies we need right now to, that we need, and we have the funding to handle it. So we're in very good shape with that. Again, this is gonna disrupt our lives going forward. We know this, my job is to minimize that. We're gonna continue to update the community through our website, through events like this, through the town manager's office, through the town website, through the town social media pages. We're gonna be able to get information out there. Again, I implore you, go to reliable sources for your information. Right now, there's no medication that works on this, and there's no vaccine. We expect a vaccine for a better part of 12 to 18 months. That's gonna take to develop it, get it approved, and get it, start to be produced. But in the meantime, again, we're gonna continue all of our planning and precaution efforts until that time. Some encouraging news, this should react in a lot of ways like flu. We deal with the flu season every year. More importantly, our medical community deals with the flu season every year. So our schools handle it with looking at absentee rates. Our urgent cares deal with this, our first responder community does, and our hospital does. This is what the medical community does. We're prepared. We do this every year. We're coming off a flu season right now, and it's continuing. So from speaking with the Hospital of Central Connecticut last week, they're prepared, and I was very impressed with everything they've been putting in place. And again, the updates will continue. I do have to just thank our board. So I'm the director of health, I report to our board. On our board, we have the town manager of Southington and Plainville, and the first selectmen of Middlefield. Everything that I could possibly ask for from that level, I'm getting. We also have our vice chair is Charlotte Politis in Plainville. She has a master's in public health. She's able to help me when we need it. We have Dr. Yurila as our chairperson. She's a local dentist, medical professional. She's able to help when we need it. We also have John Berry, who legislatively right now is a big help as we're looking at what's coming through for funding, different waivers that the state might be looking at. John will be a tremendous help during the. We also have Kelly Morrissey. Kelly has a background in finance and security, so we're really thankful to have that. And lastly, on our board is Joe Marino. Joe used to work for Connecticut Department of Public Health and part of the Strategic National Stockpile, where a lot of antivirals, respirators were located. So we have a great board that I report to, who all have expertise to help as we go through this. So I think we're prepared. What I'd say is, continue to look at our websites. This is not new for us, and our medical community is prepared. And that's what I have. I'm open to any questions that might be answers I don't have right now.
Sure.
But we're trying.
Let's open it up to the council first. Does anyone have any questions that they would like to ask Shane? We're very glad that you're here tonight, Shane. Anybody have anything they want to ask? I have a couple, but anybody else?
Madam Chair, I have a question.
Okay, Michael?
Yeah, a constituent contacted me, and I'm not sure if you can answer this, Shane, but what happens if, for some reason, government offices begin to start closing? What happens if the post office closes? Is there something in place to?
Right, so one of the plans that we've been stressing to businesses, not just government but private businesses, a continuity of operations plan. How your business, how government will keep going. There's links on the CDC website regarding developing a COOP plan, and all those conversations have started, so different, whether it be government or business, people aware of this. And I think there's great resources out there for it.
So that website would provide?
Go to cdc.gov and look at business, and right on there, there's a template for a continuity of operations plan.
Very good.
Yeah, to what degree have you had communication with the Board of Superintendent of Schools? I know I've seen, just recently today, Sacred Heart is closing the university for three weeks. Wesleyan is considering a close. If faculty are getting the coronavirus, or students, like, has there been any conversation with the school system on what to do?
Thank you for asking that. I left that out. Myself and the superintendents, the three superintendents in the region, probably have been in at least weekly communication since the start of this in January. The big concern at the beginning was students either going overseas or returning from overseas. We continue to talk. I just talked to Superintendent Cannellin after the 5:00 governor's call today, because we are both on that. I have a conference call scheduled tomorrow afternoon, and we probably talk, myself and Superintendent Cannellin, since our offices are about two offices apart, we talk every day. So there's a lot of sharing of information, not just here in Southington, but also at Plainville and Middlefield, too, a region, that regional school district. We're giving them the information they need, and he's putting it out as needed.
I have a question.
So Shane, just to follow up on the councilman's question. So my ongoing concern, or question I should say, I don't want to say it's a concern, is really the education system because of the numbers of children that we have there, and because they are children.
Right.
And they're in close proximity, of course. I personally haven't gotten a communication yet from the school system, and I have two kids in the schools. I also have talked to some constituents who have concern that there's not enough communication coming from management to the school system, to the teachers actually who are in the classrooms, about, you know, things that they can do. Hey, wash your hands, I get it. But what are we doing to actively manage within our own community? And how are we maybe informing and training the people who can have the biggest effect, such as teachers in the classrooms? And just let me give you a couple examples, you know, from the top of my head, from conversations that I've had, which by the way, my wife is also an educator in another town, and they do have, the teachers have had active dialogues about what they can do with their kids. They have had preparation planning for remote teaching, each, you know, they're already starting that. You know, things, when I think about everything that you're saying, a lot of what I hear right now, because, you know, we don't have an outbreak in our area right now, although we're monitoring, I hear things like, you know, preparation and good hygiene can help possibly prevent or minimize the effects in an area. And so things that come to mind for me are things like, you know, could we, are we doing simple things in the classroom, such as when kids walk in the door, having a five-minute hand wash, and just say, hey, every kid, go to the bathroom and wash your hands? Are we preparing classrooms with hand sanitizers? Are we asking, you know, right now, devices are very big in a lot of school systems across the world. You know, tablets and PCs are, in many school systems, given out to every student. I know in our school system, there's an abundance of them, maybe not every student, but classrooms have shared devices. So now you have children who sometimes don't have the best hygiene, are sharing devices that they're touching screens, and then they're touching their face. They're touching their desks, and they rotate desks. You know, one of the things that comes to mind for me is, I know from the past, we don't regularly clean our classrooms with disinfectant on a daily basis. We usually do that on a, either a weekend, or we do it on a shutdown period, such as winter break. We didn't have an extended winter break this year. So I wonder, you know, what are, are we doing things like a daily disinfecting of the desks, of the door handles, the things that these kids touch? And if we're not, what are your thoughts on doing something like that? Do you have the resources to do that? Does the town have the resources to do that?
So if I forget anything in this one, because that was a little bit lengthy, but one positive right now, if we look at the data on this, it's not affecting children. Again, we'll have to see as this progresses, but I think the latest data is over, we're looking at the greatest impact, 60 and over who have underlying conditions such as diabetes or heart issues, or 80 years and over. We haven't seen the outbreak so far in children. That being said, I've talked to Pete Romano, the director of operations for the school system. We've gone over the EPA-approved disinfectant. I know that the company that Southington School Systems has used for years is one of the EPA-approved disinfectant. That's what they've been using in the school systems. So he has been, the frequency, I think that's better up to the school system to answer. I know on a broader scale, the distance learning has been brought up, and Superintendent Cannellin has looked at that. He has information that I know has been shared at some points with, as far as personal hygiene, to the extent of it, that's better up to superintendent to answer than myself.
So just.
But I will look into it tomorrow, and I'll speak to him.
I definitely would love you to look into that, because, you know, I can appreciate the data that suggests that maybe kids have stronger immune systems. They are kids, of course, so, you know, they're our most prized gem that we want to ensure we're taking care of. But on the other hand, we also know that it's transmitted person to person. So, you know, just because a child might have an immunity that's better than an adult doesn't mean that they won't pass it to an adult. So if we can minimize the, if we can minimize the impact of what's going on in the schools, kill some of the virus in the school that may exist, because, you know, it could exist in a school, and a child may very well not show signs, but they still could carry it home. And then they may have a parent or a grandparent that they live with that could then be infected if they are, you know, if they are infected, but maybe their symptoms are not that great.
I was sure you concerned with the superintendent in the morning.
Yeah.
Like I said, right now, I'm either talking to Pete every day, I'm talking to superintendent definitely every day, and even the assistant superintendent. I know they're putting their plans in place. To that extent, that's their plans, but I will follow up tomorrow morning, and one of us will get back to you.
I would very much appreciate that. And I think, and I think, you know, I also think it has, I think there has to be action, my personal belief. But I also think there has to be more communication to the teachers at the ground level, and also the parents.
Again, I'll get with the superintendent, and we'll get back to you.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions? I have a couple. Yes, go ahead, Jim.
Shane, I have a question, a bigger question on the bigger picture, I guess, not the question. But we hear it's how they continue, and we hear that it's traveling quickly, and we hear that we're okay right now. So one of my questions is, and I heard you say it's a marathon, not a sprint, which I totally get. So what I don't understand, or I'm trying to get my arms around, is when it does finally get here, it's gonna get here, you know, how extensive do you think we're really gonna get hit with it? And how fast does it go away, or does it linger? Can you get it again and again?
So a lot, so a lot of that is, I'm gonna answer based on historical data with pandemics. A lot of pandemics have different waves. Not saying this one will, if you go back to H1N1, 2009, it had a strong first wave in April and May, as tied to students returning from class trips in Mexico. We had a second wave start up in September, and it quickly faded away. I fully expect different waves based on historical stuff. This is a brand-new virus. We don't know how it's gonna react over summer months. We don't know, we're planning for the worst. Don't know, I can't, I can't give estimates. That would, that would be outside of my knowledge. But just, you know, I'm planning on dealing with this for the rest of the year, and I hope I'm wrong.
Okay. And so I haven't followed China, for instance, but we know it started there several months ago. Is it still on the increase there, or is it a decline?
No, it's declining. So a lot of the cases, it's a 14-day incubation time.
Right.
We know of, we think, the way pandemics work, they hit a area hard, they move out. They might reappear, but again, it doesn't, it shouldn't linger for a long time. If I had to guess, we're looking at weeks, not months for the lingering.
Very good. Anybody else? I have, I'm gonna just ask a couple. Shane, thank you for answering that question. That was one of my questions. The other thing I would like you to clarify, so someone's at home, and they get the respiratory and coughing and a low-grade temp or whatever. There, I've heard that the health professionals are saying not just to appear at the hospital. So would you clarify that for us?
Thank you for that one. If you're at home and you're starting to feel symptoms of it, what we need you to do is call your medical professional, the professional urgent care center. Let them know you're having these symptoms rather than just showing up. A lot of it can be done over the telephone. They're gonna give you instructions that way, rather than just showing up, where we might overwhelm our healthcare system. Again, if you think about the flu, a lot of people with the flu don't necessarily go straight to the doctor, straight to the hospital. You call your doctor and say, I'm experiencing flu-like symptoms. That's what we're hoping for here. That being said, if you need, if it's an emergency, you call 911, and that town will respond as we always do. But again, a lot of this can be done. You give your medical professional a heads-up, and let them decide on how to handle it.
Very good, thank you. Is there anyone in the audience tonight that might have a question?
Madam Chair. Oh, you have? I just have one more.
Oh, okay. Yeah, Chris.
Thank you, Shane. And I just want to make a comment on behalf of myself, but I'm sure that the rest of the councilors feel the same way. If you feel any need at all, that you don't have the resources available to you, or the town manager doesn't have the resources, I urge you to speak up quickly to the town manager and the chairwoman, and I'm sure the council will act in the best interest of the town to support your endeavors. So that would be my comment.
Thank you for that.
Very good. Thank you. Anybody in the audience wish to ask a question? No? If, I would just sort of bring it kind of to a close, I would say if you have questions on the schools, or the Board of Ed, or our individual schools, or whatever, please direct it to the office of the superintendent. We've had some discussion here, and I'm sure it's gonna be reflected in the minutes, concerns about our kids, and we're bringing it to the superintendent through Shane. So if you have questions, please do so. If you have questions from your workplace, or whatever, if you can't find it on the websites, or if it still continues, you can call our public health department, and someone will be very happy to take your call. However, most of what we've heard tonight is already listed on our website, so please read the website before you start calling everybody, so anyway.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, oh, Chris, please.
If I can just make a comment, I just want to thank you.
Yes.
For being so informative, being so open, transparent with everything that's going on, and also just being a calming presence, because, you know, you're taking it all in, you're answering everyone's questions. So Shane, we appreciate everything you're doing.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Not just taking it all in, but from a fire hose, I'm sure. You've got many different directions. And it was reassuring to hear the number of people that are on your team and the extensive background that they have. That's really appreciated, and it makes me feel better.
Very good. Thank you.
Thanks, Shane.
Thank you, Shane. Now go home and wash your hands, Shane. Now go home and wash your hands, Shane.
Madam Chair, that's it for my report. We do have a brief executive session. There'll be no action outside of executive session.
Thank you so much. And now, um, our town attorney's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a couple of things on my report, starting off with the contract of 136 School Street. As you've heard me speak in the past, you have kind of combined that with the contract for 1205 Marion Ave. Though just to make it clear, these are two separate agenda items that you'll, uh, vote on tonight or take action on tonight. These contracts have already been signed. Last time, uh, the council referred these, um, to planning and zoning. Planning and zoning has reported back that they, uh, looked at this fairly and are bringing it back to you tonight for action on this. Um, I don't know, like I said, um, these are gonna be taken together. Why we're taking them together, talking about them together is they're part of a state grant we're getting for these properties to buy both of them concurrently. So I would also like to say that, you know, we really appreciate the cooperation of the property owners, knowing that these both have to close roughly on the same day or very close. Um, and everybody's been very cooperative with us.
So Attorney Taylor, could I just ask you, um, an operational question? So on our agenda under Old Business, we have action on the eight twenty fours and then action on the contract. So those would be all separate, uh, four separate, um, actions, right?
That is correct.
Okay.
And just to give you an update on the process with these, since we do have a state grant involved, um, we do have to jump through a couple of little hoops and prepare a package to send up to the state, which includes getting a survey done, um, you know, title search, all those things and making sure that the conservation easements go on there that are required. Um, we did get environmental testing done on both these properties. I think I might've mentioned that before they came back without any concerns that, um, we feel that we need to address on this. And that's about it for those two, but like I said, I'd hate, you know, I don't wanna confuse, they're all gonna be separate, um, actions, but I do try to join them together because they are a part of the grant.
Very good.
Let me give one, one shout out to Dave LaValle on that. You know, he, he's, uh, he's, he's always active in our, uh, grant writing and it's great that he's, uh, he's a wonderful resource for us, you know, writing these grants to get money for the town and continually following up. And, uh, I wanna just give a shout out to Dave for the work that he does. You know, he's behind the scenes a lot, uh, so he doesn't come here, people don't see him, uh, out here a lot, and I just wanna recognize him for that.
But Dave does a great job and he definitely knows what he's doing. So he's done a couple of these in the past, so he knows, he knows what needs to be done.
Taylor, I, I think we'd be remiss as well not to, um, mention, uh, former Councilwoman Mcelly's leadership on this transaction. She really worked hard to, uh, with Mr. LaValle on securing those state grants.
Yes.
Vice Chairman?
Yes. Uh, thank you, Attorney Taylor. Uh, for the public's, um, knowledge, I know it's, it's in our packet here, but can you just explain the, the contract details of both of these? I, I may have missed it, the dollar amounts that the town is paying and additionally the dollar amounts of the grants. I don't, I may have missed it, but just, just for the public record, I, I think it's important for the public to know what the contract dollar amounts are.
All right, the property for 136 School Street, um, is a purchase price of a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. For nineteen fifty-four, oh, actually, nope, 1205 Marion Ave, is a one hundred and five thousand. And we are getting a state grant, um, of eighty-two thousand five hundred. And that is, grant is, uh, based on us purchasing both of these properties. It wouldn't be a grant we could get for purchasing one of them.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Any other questions on this? Very good. Item, uh, E, uh, item, I'm sorry, C.
All right, item C is a new contract for nineteen fifty-four Mount Vernon Road. On this contract has been signed. It is ready for referral to the planning and zoning for the eight twenty-four. Um, and that will be the action that you guys will take up tonight. Does anybody have questions or, um, need any more details on this?
Well, Seth? No, I guess not. Thank you so much.
That's everything for my report.
Thank you, Attorney Taylor. Okay, we're moving into, uh, public communications and, uh, we would ask you to come, identify yourself, and you have five minutes to open up, uh, with whatever your issue is for the council. Good evening, Elio.
My name is Elio Fushial. I mean, madam, either five minutes before we use here, over four years. Now, I just, uh, uh, two thousand one, you were the council, and I love and respect you, for instance, it was William DiPaolo, Eileen Bedar, Edor Macheski, Nick DiPaolo, Andrew Means, Michael Ross, Art Second, Jim Redram, and yourself. Now, it should be nineteen years from this was March two thousand one. You saw me, you know, say nobody ever see how you take the property for people immigrant like me. I am so tired, I know you're so tired of the bike because, uh, like Humphrey said, you change the instrument, but the blow is always the same. Now, no council, no council, no council. I had to start the fight toward Tanguillo, with assistant Pine, which the always was selfish, you know? And really, well, Steve Talkman, we almost hit each other. I got a letter for you to let her know. You, the people was selling immediately at that time, then even the toll to the own employees what they did twelve years before. So you really don't like just me. It's the idea because the budget, you try to steal what you can to the stupid. I wanna give this to you because I guess somebody got a children, you know, to learn something.
I can pass that down for you.
Okay, you pass this now?
Okay, sure.
Now, I cannot let Madame Perk to read, but she actually employed as a public with the water into her. She should voice it, uh, read this thing. You pass it on to you?
Pass it down.
Pass it down.
This is Steve Pine. The one we almost hit in the tunnel hall with a guy. And he said, and he said, oh, I, I hope, I explained to you, I go see a lawyer. Go see a lawyer. At my knowledge, my mom, she was on target, but no school, only third, third grade. But one man said long ago, Elio, lawyer is a bigger mafia, wanna come to work for the government. I went to see lawyer after lawyer. I wanna get paid. You know, I don't ask you what everything I lost. I lost what, uh, what's the name, Delaporte Daniel, the value at that time. The rest of the town wanna do the road because I know where there is. You make a property very low and then somebody called, what by, uh, a set of like a stock mark, a set of hundred dollars that could buy for ten dollars. See, I don't know, not really stupid. You make me a mule, I'm not fool. That's okay. Uh, the manager, this one that you want into, he knew fully everything. And he lie, a liar, a liar, you let him do it? How can we run the government like this, madam?
Elio, I'm not gonna let you call somebody a liar tonight. That's not right. You can't impugn somebody's integrity just because you have the microphone, Elio.
What?
I said, you can't impugn someone's integrity by just saying anything you want. It's, it's insulting.
I understand, madam. I know, it's a forty-five hour I want. I went, I obeyed step by step Carlos Akalaski. Step by step and I pay a lot of money too for this. I'm not coming here and told what I want. Forget the guy, the price, you know, I get paid. I pay my tax like everybody else and that day you made the property worth less. If you are a remiss, you should do. The point is that they are so, have so much knowledge of this. I started from Mr. Mead, I was there because Mr. Mead, he said, anybody came forward at that time. I was there, I said, no. Madam, I really, among all, I really respect you and everybody else too, but, but the point, I wanna get paid.
I understand, Elio.
There's a, a lot, it was two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. I am amazed.
Right.
It's just like you, you have the officer, I don't let you work.
Thank, thank you, Elio. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone-
Women agenda, I'll, I'll come to the end.
Thank you, Elio.
Before I die.
Thank you. Uh, is there anyone else? I'm looking over here, cause I'm looking, Peter, do you have anything for us tonight? I just wanna make sure. Okay, very good. No other, uh, public communication, I'm going to close public communication and we're gonna open up Old Business. Uh, item A, action on the eight twenty-four for 136 School Street. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve is presented.
Second? We have a motion and a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item B, action on eight twenty-four, 1205 Marion Avenue?
Motion to approve is presented.
Second.
And we have a motion and a second? Uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Action is carried. Action on the contract for 136 School Street?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Uh, we have a motion and a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Action carried on 136 School Street. Item D, action on the contract for 1205 Marion Avenue?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. Referral for, uh, uh, action on eight twenty-four, uh, I'm sorry, referral for, uh, for an eight twenty-four on nineteen fifty-four Mount Vernon Road.
Madam Chair, I'll make that motion, send a referral to the Planning and Zoning Commission for eight dash twenty-four.
Any second? We got a second or, um, uh, any discussion?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Yep.
Um, a few comments. First and foremost, for the record, I wanna be clear. I'm an ardent supporter of the acquisition of open space. I'm proud of my votes this evening on the Marion Avenue and School Street acquisitions and I'm very grateful for former Councilwoman Mcelly's leadership, as I mentioned before, in securing the state grant that will help finance these purchases. I'm proud that during my term on the previous council, a number of us up here on this dais, uh, were able to successfully facilitate the residents' support for a two million dollar open space referendum. And as I continue my service on this council, I look forward to supporting future efforts to increase the open space acquisitions through collaborations with colleagues on both sides of the dais. The challenge for me on this particular parcel we are considering is that it is covened by a sitting town counselor. I want to state on the record that there's nothing unethical or improper about the proposed transaction we had before us. I admire my colleague's transparency and insistence on recusal from executive sessions on this matter. He's an honorable person, colleague and friend. However, where I have reservation about this transaction is with the public's perception of a sitting counselor profiting from the sale of land to the town regardless of recusal. My concern does not lie with the legality of this transaction. It doesn't lie with the value of the parcel or an appraisal. Rather, it has to do with this board potentially jeopardizing or diminishing the public's trust in how we operate. As elected officials, we're held to the highest of standards as we conduct the town's business. I really realize that this may seem unfair, that the community may scrutinize how we separate our personal and public actions. Nevertheless, the public's expectation of our adherence to those higher standards of conduct should mean something to us. And so for this reason, while I am wholeheartedly in favor of acquiring open space, I'm concerned about moving forward with this acquisition.
Very good. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, we have a motion and-
A sec, Chair. Just, I, just to ensure that, that, that it's clear on the process that was used for this, just to, uh, make sure everybody's, uh, since the councilman brought it up, um, we looked at this parcel, there was full transparency through the process. I think the councilman mentioned that he has no concerns about the process or, um, you know, that there's anything improper about this. Um, you know, my, uh, the, the team worked hard in open space as well as town staff to, to evaluate the parcel and the parcel's worth. We had appraisal from the town that existed. Uh, we took an independent approach by hiring two independent appraisers outside of, um, outside the town that we, that we paid for detailed appraisals. Uh, these were reviewed, uh, throughout the process. So we had one internal appraisal and two external appraisals. And I wanna ensure that the, I wanna make sure that the public understands that of those three proposals, the, uh, the lowest bid, the lowest appraisal that came in, came in lower than the original, uh, discussed price with the landowners. And upon re, and, and upon, uh, receiving an appraisal that came in lower than the original price, uh, we did go back to the, to the owners of the parcel and we, we, uh, asked them to consider, uh, working with the town on acquiring open space at the lowest appraised value that we received. The owners did agree to do that. Uh, I think that the process was fair. Uh, we had a balanced approach with internal and external, um, numbers. And I think, from my perspective, while I can appreciate the, uh, the comments, uh, and I can appreciate, uh, the concern for public perception because, you know, we're elected officials and we look for votes when we come to the, to the council, when we go to the, to the ballots the next time. I think we have to stand up and I think we have to do what's in the interest of the town. And I think we have to be bold enough sometimes, uh, to ensure that we're doing due diligence and that we do have independent reviews in cases like this. And I think that we need to make decisions that are in the best interest of the town and then, and, uh, and set aside, um, you know, what the fallout might be for us. And, uh, and so, you know, I, I will support this going forward because I think this is, as well as, um, you know, the, the open space committee, uh, that we've, that we've had to refer it here. I think that this is in the best interest of the town. It's a strategic parcel for a number of reasons. It has natural resources on it, uh, through water course that does feed a larger, uh, a larger area, um, that is to the east of that. Uh, there are a lot of hiking trails, uh, associated with this and I think it is, uh, a, a very strategic parcel and I think it is clearly, without question, uh, the, in the best interest of the town to acquire this piece. So I wanted to, um, make sure that that was clear.
If I could respond, Madam Chair?
No, just a moment, please. I think, I think you had your time.
Okay, but I would like to respond.
Um, Mr. Chaplinsky, when did we get this, this parcel for review? It just didn't spring up, did it? It's been years. I, I've recognized this, uh, before for discussion, since I was the chairman of the, of the Open Space Committee years ago.
The, the parcel, according to a dialogue with those who've been involved in the past with staff, that this was a parcel that the previous subcommittee, uh, had looked at before my time. Um, and, you know, I'm uncertain why the deal couldn't have gotten done at the time. But, um, you know, I think that the, there was a lot of collaboration and as I said, we, uh, when we, to be, to be open and honest with you, um, Madam Chair, when we first looked at this parcel, um, we actually didn't know that the, the parties that were involved are actually involved. That the subcommittee looked at this parcel first, uh, not knowing who the owner was. And, uh, the subcommittee looked at this and decided to review it, refer it to, uh, you know, for further action and further, uh, appraisals. It wasn't until, you know, we started to do the appraisals that we, uh, we found out who the, the owner was. So, um, you know, it's, I, I feel really good that the, that the process was, uh, was done ethically. Uh, it was done transparent, transparently, it was communicated transparently, uh, throughout the process. And I think, given those circumstances, I think, although, you know, I, I would respect the comment from the, from the councilman that there are gonna be people who are gonna have the public perception that, um, you know, that might, that may, might have negativity uh, because, you know, there's a seated counselor who has, who has a financial stake in the property. But I think we've done everything we can to be transparent about this process. Um, and I, I have absolutely no, no issue with making a difficult decision to move forward with a, uh, with a, with a, um, a thumbs up on the approval.
Thank you. Mr. Pulis?
Thank you, Madam Chair, for this additional time. I just want to say, in response to Mr. Chiplinski, that I applaud the thoroughness of his process. That is not my concern this evening. I don't think he could have had a more thorough process. I think this is a bigger issue and it's something that we've never been confronted with before in this town. I, in, in our previous discussions, I requested from town staff a list of all the current open space parcels. I asked from whom they were acquired, purchased or donated. I was hoping to find a precedent that, that showed that this is something that had happened before and that was not the case. This is uncharted territory and that's why I have concern. It's not because I'm trying to get votes, Mr. Chiplinski. It's because I have a concern that if this board diminishes the public trust, it's going to be harder for us to operate, to do what's best for the town. So I just wanted to respond to those comments and, and I understand completely the chairman of the open spaces rationale. I respectfully have a disagree with that.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody?
I'd just like to make one more comment and that is that I don't perceive that the owners of this property maximize the potential value of this property and I believe that they did the town a very, very good service and it gave us a gift in this property. So again, I think that the process was to be applauded and I don't see that it makes a difference to owns what. Property was identified as beneficial to the town, a value was established and the price was paid, period.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, so let's, let's have the roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Lombardi?
Yes.
Morelli?
Yes.
Palmeri?
No.
Pulis?
No.
Chiplinski?
Yes.
Del Santo?
Yes.
Triano?
Yes. Item carries. All right. Action on the Chamber of Commerce agreement.
Madam Chair, I'd make a motion to approve the existing contract between the Town of Southington and the Chamber of Commerce with the same contract for another five years.
One second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. That action carries. Under new business, tax refunds.
I guess it would be Mr. Pulis.
Oh, geez. Wow, first time. Madam Chair, I move to approve the tax refunds as detailed in our packet.
Thank you.
Well done.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Good. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And now we move on to the appointments. For the Senior Citizen Committee, Mr. Lombardi.
Madam Chair, I would like to put forth the following names for the Senior Citizens Committee. It's a three, these are three members for a three-year term, bringing us to March 2023. C, Mark White, Elliot Calasanto and Clifford Snow Jr.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
I'll second.
A motion first?
We just made the motion.
I'll second.
Oh, okay. Remember.
Mr. Palmeri can take it if he'd like.
Okay, Mr. Palmeri made the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Not one person's opposed. Congratulations, gentlemen.